And the public for the successful execution of our mandate. It is our hope that in the course of the execution of our different rules, I implore that we respect the dignity and the rights of the people we deal with. The commission, however, has rules that have been gazetted to guide our proceedings. We expect absolute cooperation from the public and decorum from the audience. I thank you all for your kind attention and I will hand you over to the secretary to take us through as to the proceedings as we start this commission today. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, I would like to announce the name of our first witness, Mr. Bouba Sanya, Permanent Secretary, Minister of Local Government, Lands and Religious Affairs. Madam Chair, the witness has agreed to swear by the Holy Quran through affirmation. Madam Chair, I wish to introduce the first witness to you who has agreed to swear by the Holy Quran through affirmation. Repeat after me. Say, "I" place your hand on the Holy Quran. "I, Bouba Sanya, do affirm that I will speak the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. So help me God." Madam Chair, the floor is yours again.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary, Ms. Ambalo. I would first of all, before handing over the witness to the lawyers, I would wish to welcome Mr. Bouba Sanya, who is the Permanent Secretary to the Ministry of Local Government and Lands, also being the person directly responsible for the oversight responsibility of the municipal councils that we are tasked to look into. Therefore, Mr. Sanya, we welcome you and we thank you for taking time off from your busy schedule to come and answer to the commission. And the reason why we believe that you, as the Permanent Secretary, to be our first witness is because you laid the foundation as to your oversight responsibility to this council and to state what you know and the challenges you have vis-à-vis dealing with the council. So thank you so much once again for coming. At this point, I would at this point, I would now like to call on the lead council, that is Ms. Iacar Cox, to lead the witness to give evidence to this commission. Thank you so much. And sorry because the mics are playing off a bit. I know that the technicians who regulate it because they are not getting what I'm saying. So there is slight interruptions in what I'm seeing, but that will be sorted out. So thank you so much, the technicians. I hope now you are getting me. Claire? Thank you so much. All right, I will now hand over to Ms. Cox to take the witness through. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Chair President, Commissioners. Good morning, Mr. Sanya. Can you please state your name for the record?
My name's Bouba Sanya.
And where do you work?
I work at the Ministry of Lands, Regional Government and Religious Affairs.
What is your occupation?
I am the Permanent Secretary to the Ministry.
Mr. Sanya, you gave a statement to the commission, is that correct?
Yes.
And you prepared the statement yourself?
Yes.
And it was signed by you?
Yes.
Mr. Kamara, could you kindly show this document to the witness? Is that the statement? I'm grateful. And you adopt that statement as your evidence before the commission?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I humbly apply to tender the statement of the witness, which has been adopted as his evidence before the commission.
Thank you. Now, the document so presented is a statement for Mr. Bouba Sanya, the PS for Ministry of Local Government and Lands. And it is dated the 10th of May 2023. And it is hereby admitted into evidence and marked as LGC1.
As, maybe please.
LGC1. Mr. Kamara, can you have this document? Thank you.
I'm grateful. Mr. Sanya, how long have you held the position of Permanent Secretary at the Ministry of Lands?
It's five years now.
Five years. And prior to Permanent Secretary, what designation did you hold?
I was the Director of Lands and Survey.
Okay. And how long have you been with the Ministry of Lands?
Ministry of Lands, this second, my second coming. I was there earlier in the 90s for seven years. Then I came back in 2015 up to now.
And during the break at which you were not at the Ministry of Lands, were you still working with the government?
I was, I'm working with Social Security as the principal survey for the project, for their projects.
Now, it is correct that the Ministry of Lands is under your supervision, subject to the direction and control of the minister?
Yes.
And you said that you have been working in planning. Can you give us an idea of your educational background?
Yes, I from the high school, Atamite High School. I went to Sdami High School in 1992 when I had to do my sixth form A level. I later did a diploma, high national diploma in civil engineering. Before I proceed to do my Bachelor's of Science in Surveying and Mapping in 2011. So that's the educational background.
Thank you. Now, what are your functions as or what are your duties as the Permanent Secretary of the Ministry of Lands?
I'm responsible for the coordination and the administration of the day-to-day activity of the ministry.
And generally, correspondence that comes to the ministry comes to you?
Exactly.
Now, are there several departments under you or directorates?
Yes.
Can you tell us about those?
Yeah, the coordination of lands, I have a Department of Lands and Survey and Department of Physical Planning. The coordination of the local governance, I have the Directorate of Governance. And also we have the local councils and also the Office of the Governors. I have the Religious Portfolio, which is Religious Affairs, that is the Christian Council under the Supreme Islamic Council. Equally, we have the NGO Affairs Department through the Directorate of NGO Affairs Agency and the Community Development through the Directorate of Community Development, the Department of Community Development.
So, under your departments, it is the Directorate of Governance?
Local Governance, yes.
Okay. And is that the only Directorate that deals with the local government authorities?
Yeah, that is the Directorate designated to deal with our local government affairs, even though Community Development deal with them, but the supervision of their activities is centered on the Directorate of Local Governors.
And when was that Directorate established?
The Directorate, I cannot remember it often.
But was it during your tenure as Permanent Secretary?
No, it was long established.
I'm grateful. And how is the Directorate staffed?
Yeah, the Directorate staff, we have a Director and we have a Deputy Director. We have a Principal Decentralization Officer. And then we have Decentralization Officers under the Principal, three of them.
Okay. Can you just give us a summary of their various functions vis-à-vis the local government authorities?
Yeah, the Director, the Director is the Coordinator and the Deputy Assistant in coordinating the affairs and guide the the local councils where necessary. The Decentralization Officers, they support in various areas in doing these inspections where it's necessary and then the quarterly inspection and the designated inspections of the councils. They are the ones responsible for that.
So what is the ministry's role, really? How, what is the extent of the ministry's role when it comes to the local government authorities?
We have an oversight function, oversight function over the local authorities to guide them and also direct them where it's necessary.
You have said you have a Decentralization Unit. Can you tell us what what the idea or the policy of the government is in respect of decentralization?
Decentralization, as the Gambia Government opted for the devolutional decentralization system, where the center is to devolve some of the powers and also resources upon request to the local councils. And the local councils will equally devolve powers to their decentralized structures. And these decentralized structures, we have a parallel structure under decentralization. The admin structure is the Governor at the head of the region and the Chief at the head of the district and the Alcalo at the head of the village. The development structure is the local council headed by the Chair President or a mayor as the head of the region under the Village Development Committee at the level of the world. Sorry, World Development Committee at the level of the world. And we have a Village Development Committee at the level of the village. So these are the two parallel structures we have at the decentralized structure.
Yes, but what is the purpose? As in, what is the, what is the government's view for decentralization? Is it that the government is seeking to move most of its functions or some of its functions solely to the local authorities so that they have autonomy over those matters that fall within their jurisdiction?
Yes, the government, they designate is a responsibility, extended responsibility that government has given to the local authorities to collect revenue, tax on, from the locality that that local authority falls and also spend it on that local authority with that local autonomy.
So does the ministry develop policies towards this in relation to and with the local authorities?
Yes, there is a local government act that establishes the councils themselves and the Office of Governors, Chiefs, Alcalis, which is Local Government Act 2002, amended, as amended in several amendments where I made along the rule.
Okay, and you've spoken about the governance. Can you tell us what their role is?
The role of the Governor is to represent the president in the region. But in relation to the local councils, the act indicate that the the Governor is the head of the region and to an extent, he coordinates also, helps to coordinate affairs of the councils.
So, but the Governor is sort of a liaison between the central government and the local authorities?
Yes.
But does the Governor interfere in the runnings of the activities of the councils?
Not, not, not supposed to interfere by directing them, but if there are issues there, he can bring it to their attention so that it can be addressed.
So are there projects which the central government which the central government works with the local authorities to achieve?
Yes. The central government, over the years, provide an amount for the subvention of projects. This subvention, subvented amount, the councils will come up with projects to the tune of that particular subvented amount. And this project will be supervised jointly with the central government. But there are other projects like the United Nations Capital Development Fund that actually is out there to help governments and councils to understand how these decentralized structures can be utilized and when given some form of authority to implement projects. They have intervened in so many regions by providing them with gardens, markets, bohuls, bridges between villages. And this is coordinated at the level of the local councils with the support of the community development.
Okay, but what is central government's role in those projects? Because those are projects that are essentially under the mandate of the local authorities. And it's for their local areas. So what is the central government's?
The central government role in that is the, the project is acquired through the central government and then taken to the local authorities to coordinate, to help coordinate and implement. And then the central government also make payments to its staff and also some DSAs to the staff in coordinating those projects. That is the role it plays in those projects.
You said that the project comes through the central government. How is that?
The project is through the EU, EU funding that came through our central government.
So essentially, the reason why central government is involved in those projects is because the funding comes from outside donors?
Exactly.
Okay. And how do, how does central government coordinate? You have said that central government pays the staff, which staff?
The community development staff.
Okay, from the, from the project funds?
From the government GLF.
Can you, government what, sorry?
Government local funding, that is the GLF budget, from the national budget.
Okay, so what is, aren't there any payments from the development fund to the staff? Or are the funds solely for the purpose of the project without salaries or anything like that? Emoluments?
No, emoluments to the, you mean to the?
You said to the community development staff.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming to the, whichever other staff are involved in the project.
The project will provide support. Where there are meetings, they will provide transport reform to people who attend. And also where there are tracks, they will pay some of the staff, which are government staff, inclusive allowances as well. The project pays that as well and also supports some of the field officers with fuel.
Okay, and what about the project itself? The funds from the development partner goes directly to the project?
Yes, it is such that the idea of the project is to make the money available to the World Development Committee. The money comes through the central bank. And central bank will release this fund with the advice and direction from the Ministry of Finance to the world account of the World Development Committee, of the world that has got that project, so that they manage their own fund at their level. So that fund that goes into their account is purposely for their project. That is not going to pay any government staff or any outsider. That goes purposely to be implemented on their project.
Okay, and the part of the fund that is used to pay government staff and for meetings and things like that is already removed before the other funds go to the world?
No, no, the world project, the project is designed in such, in such that it also catered for those funds that are paid to those staffs. But then the ones that are going for the projects, that one doesn't reduce. It goes as it is approved.
So the central government, as in the Ministry of Lands and the world, bothly, bothly, both have access to the funds? Or the Ministry of Lands does not have access to those funds?
No, the ministry doesn't have access to the fund. But it's important to note that these projects, the community, the Department of Community Development designed together with the world, these projects at the design stage. And at that stage, government pays the staff to go into the field meet with this project, the world committees, they choose their projects themselves. And then now these people will help them to design the project, cost it, and then now implement it.
So they would have an idea of how many meetings they would require and how many staff they would have on the project and how many central government staff would come on board. And they would have made allocations for those, for those funds, for payment for those funds prior to implementing the project?
The, if I get you well, the intervention of the project will have certain part of the function, of the oversight function, been taken care of. But not all. The other part is taken care of by government from the, from the main budget, government budget.
Okay, so in such instances where there are projects funded by development partners, what is government's contribution?
This one, we, the first part has been sponsored by EU. But when the first cycle got finished, government has put in about 75 million to enable other worlds also. Now it's going to be, now instead of EU continue paying the project for sustainability, government has budgeted about 75 million to be able to proceed on with the project because of its importance to the local people.
Is that in this budget or is that a previous budget?
That is in this budget.
Very well. And you said some of these projects are in respect of farming, farms, agriculture? What else, sorry?
Well, they, bohuls for drinking water, to provide water for the village, normal drinking water. And also there are communities who were suffering because they have a stream and that is disconnected, that connect community, especially during the rainy season. So they use that farm to build a bridge so that they could easily pass. This is in Jara. And then their first second projects were all on the bridges. They built bridges to connect the two communities so that the children, we understand that some children will die during the rainy season trying to cross, going to school.
But some of the area councils also budget for these things in their annual budgets that they prepare. So for agriculture, for bridges and things like that. So what happens in these instances where they've prepared their budget is come to your ministry and there's also donor funding? Is the ministry in a position to know beforehand that actually this project has already been, there's already been provision for funding? So the, it shouldn't come out of your annual budget? As in, it shouldn't come out of council funds?
Yeah, one of the reasons why the council budget is submitted to the minister for endorsement is to mainstream that intervention by councils with that of the central government so that there's no duplication. So that it is somehow money is efficiently utilized. Because what council budget for and what some of the central government units or projects budget for, if it is an intervention going to the community, the councils, if they have intervened in a bohul in village A and this project is also putting a bohul in village A, council might better use their fund to go and intervene in another village and then allow the project to do that for them. So that's why the project is normally submitted to the minister for such kind, among other things, for such kind of mainstreaming.
And the budget does go through such mainstreaming when it comes to the ministry?
Yeah, sure. We have a, we have a committee that sits over the budget that comprise of the staffs of the ministry and other ministries like finance, GRA and others to look at the budget and then endorse it or advise the minister so that the minister will endorse it.
Does the ministry provide technical assistance to the councils?
Yes.
What form of technical assistance?
We, not long ago, organized a training for council CEOs and the director of finance and the finance team in preparing their budgets, because we've realized that councils are using different budget styles. So that idea of when a CEO moves from one council to the other, he will find it difficult to settle down. But just like government, in government, all budget lines are the same, by Ministry of Finance, Ministry of Agriculture, Ministry of Lands. If you have fuel, fuel code is the same, if you have transport, all the codes are the same. So it makes it easy for a permanent secretary who moves from Ministry of Finance to Ministry of Lands to catch up. So councils, we are not doing the same. So we were able to train them and provide them that budget codes, and then now all the councils are using that. And also the rollout of the IFMS system has also been a training, it went with training. The government provide training to the councils in using the IFMS system, because we have got a serious problem in councils being able to produce financial statement. Then the IFMS is a system that knows your transaction, your revenue coming in, the whole budget will be feed into the system, the revenue coming in, and also the expenditure. So at the end of the day, you just can, you can generate your financial statement by the press of a button, and then it will print it for you, because all your transactions are done in a system, it is doing it for you simultaneously.
All right, but have you experienced, or have you seen where the local councils or local authorities experienced difficulty in using the IFMS system?
The IFMS system, yes. We have, after the rolling out of the IFMS system, the Ministry of Finance, together with our staff, went round to see the compliance and what are the difficulties. They have difficulties, one of which is the internet, which is general in this country, that has been a problem, and we advise, and we work with cartel to roll out fiber at their offices to see if we can improve on that, on that system. But we have to remember that we have in these regions also sub treasuries, which are also using IFMS. So it's not just, between that locality, it's not just that is the local councils who have, who are using IFMS. We have our sub treasuries at the level of the governance, who are also using IFMS. So if they are able to use it, and then use all transactions in IFMS system, then we should expect councils should also be able to use it within the same locality.
But you have just pointed out that there are issues such as internet, which is a general issue.
Yeah, that even in my office, it happens.
So do you not think that something should be done? Because the gap that would be created when there's no internet and so the IFMS system cannot be used, because I'm assuming that the area councils would receive funds and have to input all those things regularly. Do you, do you not think that something should be done in that regard, or perhaps an alternative way to make sure that there are no breaks in the system?
Yeah, that's why IFMS users, especially the, their budget officers, or people who are assigned as budget officers, and the directors of finance should have alternative internet system. But we also avail them the opportunity, if they have an issue, then we will avail them the office of the accountant general, for them to do their transaction, so that they can cover, just like any ministry will do. So we also have that one, but then we also advise them that they need to have alternative internet system, like the dougles and other systems to support where the normal internet is not working.
Okay. How often do you have these trainings, or are they for a period and they stop?
The period, there was a period that it was concentrated, where all the officers came down to the accountant general and they were trained. But after that training, the team went round to look at their usage of the system, and then identify their individual deficiencies, and then adjust them on those areas.
Okay. Now, part of the ministry's mandate is to ensure that local government comply with all laws, regulations, and national policies and guidelines. How does the ministry do this?
Yeah, the ministry always, as I said earlier, the directorate of governance will conduct inspection to the councils quarterly, and some of these, they will look at some of the compliance issues, in terms of policy compliance, in terms of like procurement and other issues that are related to the function of the council. So once these are looked into, and then there are issues there, we will of course try to address those issues internally with the, with the individual councils. Equally, there are, there is normally annual audit of the councils, and this audit will also include auditing, not only the financial audit, but the system, they will audit the system in terms of compliance, and then that audit queries will also be used to adjust where necessary.
So how do you address these issues internally with the councils?
For the inspection, we call the councils, and then discuss with them and identify the problems to them, and then now ask them where there is a need for us to source an expert outside, we will look at the system ministries to join us to do this. We did capacity building in terms of like manpower, looking at their capacity card with the help of the P F M unit and the Ministry of Finance, and also P M O. This was done, and then the capacity assessment indicated some problems which we identified to the councils to address, some of which is to fill in the vacant positions with qualified personnel, which the service commission is currently doing.
Okay, but when you say that you assist by ensuring that these capacity issues are addressed, and that where there are vacant positions, they are filled, when you say we, do you mean the ministry itself?
The ministry as a supervising body is responsible for that, but then we don't do the capacity filling ourselves. There is a body, that is the Local Government Service Commission, that does the recruitment. We will assign councils to advertise the positions, and this will be sent to the service commission, and then it will be filled with this contribution of the council itself.
Okay, what is the ministry's relationship with the Local Government Service Commission?
The ministry's relationship, the ministry serves as the personnel unit of the service commission, all issues, because the Act indicate that the Local Government Service Commission is supposed to function at the same standard with the Public Service Commission. And the setup at the Public Service Commission, the ministries, their requests are sent through the personal management unit, which will look into these requests, and if it is not in line, they will send it back to the ministry in charge to adjust to be in line before they forward it to the service commission for their decision. Because the service commission is not an operation body, they are, they are for matters to be brought to them to make a decision. On the same way, going by the same, the ministry also serve as like the personnel management unit, the P S P M O, all letters from the ministries are sent to the P S P M O. Equally, all letters from the councils are sent to the permanent secretary of Ministry of Lands. When the issue is looked into, and there are issues in terms of the request is not fully compliant, we will request the councils to adjust for it to be compliant, so that we can submit to the service commission for their decision.
Okay, but this is in respect of a unified Local Government Service Commission?
Exactly.
So can you tell us a bit about the history of the service commission?
Yeah, the service commission, it started when, during, from the first act, the provision was that the each council should have its own service commission, whereby they will appoint people from their own locality, and then they will do the appointment for that particular council. With time, this has been found to compromise a lot, because people were choosing and then picking people who were not, to an extent, qualified for those positions. And also the cost involved in, in, in funding the service commission for each council, and as a result, the Act was amended to have a unified Local Government Service Commission. Just like if the Public Service Commission can serve the whole civil service, it just makes sense to have a Local Government Service Commission to serve all local government authorities.
Okay, so the Unified Local Government Commission was set up by way of the amendment to the Local Government Act in twenty fifteen?
Exactly.
But the body itself was not set up until much later. Can you tell us why?
The body was set up at one time, and then their time expired, and they were not functional. But then after the coming into effect of the new government, this body was set up, and since then, it was functional.
Okay. How does the Local Government Service Commission fund its activities?
The Local Government Service Commission, initially, we requested that the councils
This is provided for in the Act, is that not correct?
Exactly.
But we have seen correspondence from the ministry, as you have said earlier, that
contribute to put in their budget an amount for the payment for the Local Government Service Commission.
all correspondence from the councils is channeled through the ministry for the Local Government
That was in the fourth year, but then we realized that this is not an efficient way
Service Commission.
of dealing with a body that should be acting independently, because if those funds did Exactly.
And you have stated that the reason for this is because you believe it's synonymous
not come, then that means they will not function.
with P M O and the central government?
Exactly. So if a council feel aggrieved and they don't pay, that means they will not have their
Right, but do you not think the fact that it has to go through the ministry impacts
money. So the central government took the responsibility by putting it in the national budget for
on the independence of the service commission?
them to be paid.
When was that?
No. This was in twenty eighteen, if I could remember.
Why do you say so?
Because we don't make any decision on those letters.
In twenty eighteen?
We only make sure, because we are the custodian of the Act. We make sure there are provisions, for example, somebody has created a problem, and then the person needs to be disciplined, like suspended or dismissed. The body that the ministry now, when the requests come, will look at whether this person has ever been, for example, steps required to dismiss an individual, whether they have initial warning, whether the particular council has given this person the recommended, the number of warnings before we submit, because if not, it's just submitting to a body and returning back to the council. So the body, the ministry serves as at that, looking into the submission to the council, sorry, to the commission, by looking at the compliance of what is requested for. If that warnings are not done, then they will be asked, that inasmuch as the person has gone wrong, you, the law requires you to give the person the warning. So can you provide us with the warning letters, which we will put together and then send to the service commission, so that they know that this person of, causing this offense has been warned before and did not achieve, and now they are recommending for them to make a decision?
Now, sorry, let me just take you back a little bit. Who sets up the service commission?
By the law, is the minister who appoints them.
And how does he appoint them?
The minister look at the people who are, who he feels have the competence to serve, those who have personnel management experience, those who have experience in council matters and the financial matters, legal matters, are all considered in the appointment.
Okay, and when the service commission was set up, are there any members from the ministry?
No.
When was the directorate of governance set up?
As indicated, I said I cannot recall now.
Okay, but there's, the director of governance is a member of the service commission?
No, he serves as the secretary.
Very well. Can I just show you? First of all, let me just introduce, the ministry was kind enough to provide files in respect of the different departments to the council, to the commission, I'm sorry. Can you just look at this file? It's a camera. Flag. But before, yes, the file before that particular document, that is the ministry's file, is it not?
Yes.
And can you tell us what the file number is?
File number is L M thirty-five, slice one, thirty-one, slash zero, one.
And it is in respect of Local Government Service Commission?
Exactly.
Okay. Madam Chair, I would like to tender the file that has just been identified by the witness.
stroke zero-one, to be admitted in evidence and marked as L C G two. But before...
The file?
Yes, the file before that particular document. That is the ministry's file, is it not?
Yes.
And can you tell us what the file number is?
File number is LM35/131/01.
And it is in respect of the Local Government Service Commission?
Exactly.
Madam Chair, I would like to tender the file that has just been identified by the witness.
The local government file with reference number to be admitted in evidence and marked as LCG2.
Mr. Sanyan, can you please just indicate the folio number of the letter that you were shown?
LM35/131/01 in bracket 123.
And it is folio number what in that file? Very well. You had... That letter shows that as of 2019, the ministry was asking the local councils to contribute towards the Local Government Service Commission.
Yes, that is the letter that was sent to the councils.
Okay, so it's not... You had previously stated that it is in 2018 that government had made allocation for the service commission in its budget?
Yes, the government has made the allocation, but the allocation was not enough to pay them for the whole year.
It was not enough to pay them for?
The amount that we put in the budget, the first year, was not enough, so in the process. And also, I think, at this time, the government budget was already approved. So that was the time we asked councils to pay. But this was not... They didn't even pay.
They didn't pay?
No, not this one.
Mr. Sanyan, do you remember how much was allocated for the service commission?
Cannot recall it offhand, but then we, during the initial stage, I think it was, if I could remember, I think it was like 500?
500 what, sir?
500,000, if I could remember. I'm not sure of this figure, but I think around that figure.
But the service commission members, they're not staff of the ministry, is that correct?
Yes.
And they are paid sitting allowances?
Exactly.
Is that correct? And how often do you believe they sit?
No, they are not paid sitting allowances. They are paid monthly allowance.
They're paid monthly allowance, very well. How often do they sit, if you are away?
They sit very often, but at least they should sit once in a quarter.
Sorry. So regardless of how often they sit, they are paid a fixed monthly allowance?
Exactly.
Very well. And you believe that the budget was 500,000, and it was not sufficient?
Yeah, the initial budget.
The initial budget?
Yes.
Could you kindly indicate the reference of the letter that you've been shown?
LM35/131/01 in bracket 158.
And the folio number?
It's 158.
Now, from that document, it is correct, is it not, that the allowance, monthly allowance for the commission members, actually, the three-month allowance for the commission members was 96,000, that I see?
Exactly.
And you're saying that the 500,000 was not sufficient for...
I must say, that was the initial amount.
Is the initial budget?
Yeah, but then the budget at the approved level, I cannot remember what was approved. What we put in the budget, but the final budget was less than this amount.
And you're saying that the councils did not pay?
That, yeah, yeah. The first year, 2018, I remember they paid. But this one, I cannot remember any council that paid. I stand to be corrected, anyway.
But in 2018, the service commission was not open running?
2018?
Was it?
I believe so. Because this 2019 payment.
Now, can you please identify the letter that you've been shown? And the folio number?
Folio number is 125.
Now, that is the letter inviting stakeholders to the inauguration of the newly formed unified commission, is that not correct?
Exactly.
The Local Government Service Commission?
Yes.
And that was in 2019, is that not correct?
Exactly, January.
Yes, so can I have that, please? So it was not in 2018 that the service commission was operational? Am I right?
Yeah, the service, I think the budgeting, the budgeting and the formation of the service commission has to be done before their inauguration. This was done in 2018. The inauguration was done January 2019. But then, we had to prepare the budget for them, and we also had to appoint them. So all was done within 2018.
But then, it was in 2019 that the ministry wrote to the councils to ask for their contributions?
Exactly. Because there was no existing enough budget for the service commission. That is why we had to ask for the solicitude support.
I'm sorry, there was no existing what?
There was no enough budget line for that year. Because all this happened after the budget cycle.
So, let me sort the way clear. There was not enough budget, or there was no funds in the budget? Because I would have thought...
No, there was a budget line. There was a budget line that has been created and that has been in the budget even before their creation. And every year, there will be some amount of money in that budget. But this budget got approved with that amount, which was not sufficient, before the creation of the service commission. So the fund would not be able to pay the service commission. That's why, at the time, we fall back onto the councils to, for their support to pay the service commission.
Very well. And where is the account of the service commission lodged?
I cannot recall, but then, we have an account where we ask them where they can pay to that account. I cannot recall the account itself, under the bank.
But it was the ministry that wrote to request the opening of the account for the Local Government Service Commission?
The opening?
It was the Ministry of Lands that wrote to request for the opening of a bank account for the Local Government Service Commission.
Exactly.
Now, where are government funds usually lodged?
Government funds are lodged at Central Bank.
At Central Bank? Can you please look at this document? Could you kindly identify that document?
That is a letter reference LM35/131/01 in bracket 150.
And the folio number is what?
150, yeah.
150? And that is a letter from the Ministry of Lands to the Managing Director of Guaranteed Trust Bank requesting the opening of a bank account for the Local Government Service Commission?
Exactly.
Can you tell us why it is to a commercial bank rather than the central bank?
Yeah, because this is in anticipation of receiving these funds from the councils. This is contribution coming from the councils. If we pay to the central government, it's going to the GLF, it's going to the central fund, and to access it will be an issue. So that's why we decided to pay the money to the private bank. At the time, the government was allowing institutions to open accounts so that they can operate certain activities.
So what activities would be funded from the Local Government Service Commission account?
That was just to pay their allowances for that year, and also, if they have any threat, it will pay for that, and also their sitting. Then, we normally provide them breakfast, and also lunch, and also some logistic support that they might request.
Okay, where are these meetings held?
Meetings are held at the conference room at the ministry.
But there are instances where meetings have been held in other places, other than the ministry?
Exactly, the previous service commission were having meetings outside.
Just to take you back a little bit. You said that it would be difficult to get funds out of the Central Bank if they were lodged at the Central Bank?
Maybe that is, I said, in the consulted form. If this money is sent through the government system, it will go to the consulted form. So now, to prepare their payment when it is coming from another... So if it is coming from government, government will allocate the money to us directly. But if we pay the money now to the consulted form, we might have instances where these people might sit for a number of months without getting their payment and trying to get that money back. So being the case, we decided to open an account to address that problem.
Okay, can I get this, please? Now, it is apparent from your files that the ministry writes correspondence on behalf of the Local Government Service Commission?
No.
You do not, the ministry does not write on behalf of the service commission?
We convey their decisions.
They convey decisions?
Decisions, yeah.
Okay. And, but the Local Government Service Commission has its own letterhead, is that not correct?
Yes.
So why is it that they cannot convey their decisions directly?
Yeah, just like I said earlier, as the Local Government Service Commission is by the act obliged or expected to follow to the same standard with the Public Service Commission, all decisions made by Public Service Commission are put in their letterhead and sent to the Permanent Secretary PMO, who conveys those decisions to the various sectors. Equally, decisions made by Local Government Service Commission are sent on their letterhead to the Permanent Secretary, who conveys those decisions to the various councils.
And it is correct that the Local Government Service Commission sends details of its meetings, minutes of its meetings, to the Office of the Permanent Secretary, Ministry of Lands?
Exactly.
Why is this?
Their meetings, minutes?
Yes.
That, the minutes that they said, that they feel that we need to take action on, they will send it to us for action.
Okay.
It's not all meetings.
All right. Did you also write to the Accountant General's Department to request the opening of a bank account within the same period that you had written to Guaranteed Trust Bank?
Accountant General's seeking for approval, you mean?
Yes, to open a bank account for the Local Government Service Commission.
Yes, I think it might be the same process. You first request for approval, then you write for opening.
You first request for approval and then you write for what, sorry?
You, you request for approval from the, uh, government body, that is Accountant General, to open an account outside.
Okay.
If they agree, they will approve for you to go ahead, then you will, then, uh, request for the opening.
Okay, um, sorry, just one minute. Can I just show you? Could you kindly identify the document? Could you kindly identify the document?
Yeah, it's a letter with reference LM thirty-five, uh, stroke one thirty-one, stroke, uh, zero one.
And the folio number?
Folio number one five one.
Now, that is the letter to the Permanent Secretary of the Ministry of Finance, requesting approval to open a bank account.
Yes.
And it is dated, can we have the date, please?
Uh, that is in April twenty nineteen.
What, what day in April?
Sixteenth April twenty nineteen.
Now, if you turn over that letter, just behind it, there's the letter to Guaranteed Trust Bank, correct?
Yes.
And it's the same date as the letter to the Ministry of Finance?
Yes.
Right, so the approval, the request for approval to open an account was dated the same day as the letter applying to the bank to open the account?
Yes, the two letters were on the same date.
So the approval request was not sent before the one asking to open the account? You did not get approval prior to requesting to open the account?
No, maybe in some cases you, you engage the office of the Accountant General at the ministry. In government operation, you get and get in principle approval and they will ask you to go ahead whilst you write to them. So, so that there is no delay in the process. So this might be one of those cases where you have a meeting with the body and tell them your intention as to what you want to do, they will give you approval in principle. And then they will ask you to write to them and equally write to the bank because knowing that the approval will come. So this might be one of that cases.
Okay, so, um, when you speak to your counterpart in advance, would you, like in this instance, inform them what bank it is you want to open the account to?
Exactly.
Okay. Please identify that letter.
Uh, this, uh, letter to the Accountant General, uh, with the reference DE twenty-one slash zero one slash P point five five, in bracket one sixty-five, one sixty-three, sorry.
It is a letter from the Accountant General?
Exactly.
And it is dated, what, sorry?
Fifth May.
Fifth May, and it's in response to the letter?
The request.
The request to open an account?
Exactly.
But in this letter, the account that is referenced is a Central Bank account, is that correct?
The, this, yeah, this one is a Central Bank account.
Right, so it was in the account that you requested to open at Guaranteed Trust Bank that the Accountant General opened, is it?
No, maybe we are talking of differently. There might be a request equally for, to Central Bank, to, to, to these people to have an account open for them at the, uh, Central Bank as well. Uh, I'm not sure, I'm not very clear about this, but then there are instances where we will request, uh, these local accounts, but then, uh, we will also request through the Central Bank to have an account open for them at the, uh, Central Bank, where the money will be lodged and then transferred to the local account where it, the need is necessary. Because the Act, uh, somehow recommends that, sorry, not this Act, but the provision on the Act is that we have a money spent, uh, the, some of these monies will be sent to the, uh, Central Bank account and when there is a need for its use, it will be transferred to a local bank where it will, the operational matters will be made at that level because of the access, easy access to fund at that level. So that was the idea.
Okay, but then all the requests in respect of opening the bank accounts were written by the ministry?
Exactly.
And they would ordinarily be in that file?
Yes.
And if there was no letter in that file to the Central Bank requesting the opening of a bank account, then it would mean that there was no letter written in that regard, correct?
No, that might not mean, I saw it, because if we look at the consistency of the folio numbers here, uh, in this file, you might realize that there is a letter here which is not, uh, my number. So there might be, uh, uh...
But that letter is attached to another letter, is it not?
No, no, it's a separate letter.
It's a bundle?
It's a separate letter, this one and this one are different.
Okay.
They're different. So sometimes the filing can, can cause it, uh, but we will check whether this request is made and then we make it available if it is, if it has been made.
Yes, please do, thank you. The account that was actually opened for the Local Government Service Commission is one at the Central Bank. Do you know if the one at Guaranteed Trust Bank was ever opened?
Um, I need to find out, I need to confirm that.
Okay, can you do that and let us know at a later date?
Certainly.
Now, who, who are the signatories to the account?
The account at the, you mean at the Central Bank?
Yes, who, who are the signatories or who manages the account?
The account will be at the level of the Direct Trade and the Accountant, uh, at some, at some point, there may be the Permanent Secretary, I'm not sure of this other one. But normally at the level of the department, the head of the department with the accountant will be a signature to the account.
The head of the department?
Yes, that is the director.
So in this case, it would be, in, for the Local Government Service Commission, who would it be?
It might be the, because the Direct Trade of Governance, uh, was handling this, it might be at that level. But I'm not sure whether, uh, because I've never used this account, so maybe it's at that level, but I'll confirm that.
Okay, and, I'm sorry, could you just take us again over the role of the Local Government Service Commission?
The role of the Local Government Service Commission is to do some recruitment, all the recruitment of the councils and, uh, the disciplinary actions and also, uh, bringing some training, recommending some trainings for the councils, if I could remember. These are the main functions of the council.
Now, the Local Government Service Commission is provided for under the Local Government Act?
Exactly.
And that act is basically, the ministry is in charge of ensuring compliance with the act?
Exactly.
Now, the ministry had at some point had meetings with PMO, is it PMO? In respect of the way forward as regards the relationship between the Local Government Service Commission as well as the ministry?
Exactly.
Now, why, why was that meeting requested?
There was, uh, I think the commission, uh, at some point, uh, wanted to meet the, uh, Public Service Commission. But I want to know that, uh, the Local, the Public Service Commission, uh, when we wanted to engage them in time of looking at the function of the Local Government Service Commission, we were told that the two bodies are of equal powers and they are such because we wanted at the time to bring one member of the Public Service Commission to serve in the Local Government Service Commission in order to at least help them with their experience. But we were told that there, these are equal bodies, so they cannot sit in each other's, uh, commission and they should be operating independently.
They should be operating what?
Independently.
Okay, but it is the ministry that, as I had said earlier, writes on behalf of the Service Commission, even though the Service Commission is an independent body. It is the ministry that de- requested for banks, bank accounts to be opened for the Service Commission. And this is always the Service Commission has already been established?
Yes.
Why, why is this? Why, why does the ministry not allow the Service Commission to do its own letters, to open its own account, et cetera?
I would not say, I would not use that word ministry allowing because it's by function of the ministry that they have to do that. It's not by ministry allowing the Service Commission to do that. The Service Commission is a service provider appointed by the ministry and supposed to be paid by the ministry. So we provide for them. So we have to understand one thing here, the Direct Trade of Governance serves as the secretaryate. So any letter they sign and send on behalf of the Service Commission is signed for by the Permanent Secretary. So most often, this is usually confusing to people thinking that, uh, some of these, uh, requests are being made by the ministry, even though it's signed for, uh, by the Permanent Secretary, but the secret, secretary to the commission is also the director of governance.
So I, I understand, um, well, I believe I understand what you're trying to say, but my concern here is, in the same vein that you feel some people would see it as problematic, you, you would agree that generally it would seem as if the ministry and the Service Commission are not actually separate and that the Service Commission is not actually independent of the ministry?
It is independent of the ministry.
Okay. Um, going back to the meeting with PMO, now it is correct that a letter was written to PMO in respect of, um, advice, seeking advice, so to speak, as to how to essentially operate the Service Commission, correct?
No, how, how some of their functions should, should, uh, should be.
Yes.
The operations are defined in the Act.
I'm sorry, the operations is defined in the?
Yeah, how they operate, uh, what they do is in the Act, but then we want to know some of the issues because, uh, the reference is made on the Act that they should work to the standard of the Public Service Commission.
But it was, the PMO had written back to say that they believe the Direct Trade, sorry, the, the Local Government Service Commission should act independently and it should have its own dedicated office, is that correct?
Exactly, exactly.
Do they have their own dedicated office?
We are yet to be able to have an office for them, but, uh, when they come, they, because of space constraint, we cannot have an office for them.
And they only sit once a month, essentially, on average?
No.
How?
They, they sometimes sit every week.
Every week?
Exactly.
Okay. Now, there are instances where correspondence has been sent from the councils to your office for onward transmission to the commission. In fact, al- almost all instances, I mean, there is correspondence from your ministry directing the councils to address all correspondence to your office. All correspondence that are meant to go to the Local Government Service Commission to your office.
Yeah, most of the correspondence, at some point councils were writing directly to the Service Commission.
Yes.
And then there are tensions where called that they should write through the Office of the Permanent Secretary.
Could you please identify that document?
Yeah, this is, uh, a letter addressed to all the councils, if I, uh, Japans and Lord, uh, and CEOs.
And what's the reference?
Reference is, uh, LM thirty-five slash one thirty-one slash zero one, folio two hundred.
And, okay, folio two hundred, right?
Exactly.
Now, that is the letter that the ministry wrote directing all the local government councils to refrain from addressing letters directly to the Local Government Service Commission and to channel all letters through your ministry?
Exactly.
Okay. Please identify the letter that was shown to you.
Letter is, uh, there is a letter about heading submission of correspondence from councils. Uh, reference LM thirty-five slash one thirty-one, zero one, folio two one five.
All right, now that letter is dated when?
The letter is dated twenty eighth June two thousand and nineteen.
And it's forwarding a bundle of correspondence from various area councils that were meant to go to the commi- the Local Government Service Commission?
Exactly.
Right, now, if you remove the clip, you see the letters that are contained in the bundle?
Yes.
Now, there's letters dated May twenty nineteen, right?
Yes.
There's also letters dated April twenty nineteen?
Yes.
And these are all letters that relate to staff matters?
Exactly.
Right? Now, the reason why these letters are not sent directly to the Local Government Service Commission is because they have to be sent through your office?
I would not say that.
You directed that they be sent to your office?
Yeah, but that was not the reason why they are not sent to the, uh, come again if I get you on.
I said the reason they are sent to, they were not sent by... I said the reason they are sent to, they were not sent by the councils directly to the Local Government Service Commission was because you directed them to send them to your office?
Through my office?
Through your office?
Exactly.
Right, that requires them to send it to your office for you to transmit to the Service Commission?
Exactly.
Now, these are staff matters that have arisen from April, at least. And the letter sending them to the Service Commission is sent in June, towards the end of June, two thousand and nineteen. So these are staff matters that are not dealt with in at least two months from when they arose. Do you think that the fact that it had to go through your ministry to the Service Commission had anything to do with that?
No.
So what do you think caused the delay?
The delay could be several factors. One of it is the letter can be written in April, I receive it in May-June. This could be on route transmission, some of these councils are far. They, to get their letters to our office takes time. And also, some of these requests might have issues that we want them to supply. For example, you write, you said we want to promote Buba. You have not provided the initial position of Buba, what are his qualifications and the like. You have not provided documents that shows his qualification. We will request for this to be provided before we proceed to submit this to the Service Commission. So these are some of the reasons that could be a part of the delay. And also, we all know, movement of letters sometimes got delayed in the process.
So are you saying that the ministry vets the letters that are sent prior to sending them on to the Service Commission?
Just like I said earlier, that request made for certain issues have to make sure they comply. That compliance is done at the level of the ministry. Look at issues that you are requesting for the Service Commission to do, because Service Commission is not going to be, going into the operational matters. They're going to decide on matters that have been brought to them fully compliant. So when it's not compliant, the ministry will request that those non-compliant issues are addressed. Then we submit it to the Service Commission for their decision.
So are you saying that the Service Commission's role is only to deal with the decisions and not to themselves consider the matters that would lead to their decisions? The ministry is going to do that and then send?
I think you are getting me wrong.
Perhaps?
Yes. The decision of Service Commission should be made. If I am to be made, if I am to be promoted, let me, for example, give an example. And I'm recommended for promotion. The decision of the Service Commission, me providing them with all the necessary documents to the Service Commission to make decision is to the advantage of that staff. If those documents are not provided to the Service Commission, they can make a decision thinking that that is what obtains. So the role of the ministry is to request for any document that is related to that matter and then put them together and then submit them to the Service Commission. The Service Commission make decision independently looking into those documents, satisfying themselves, but the ministry does not in any way participate in that process.
But do you not think the Service Commission, the commissioners are in a position to look at the documents sent to them and decide whether or not they are sufficient or insufficient and ask for the councils to send further documentation?
That is not the practice.
No, but do you think that they are capable of doing this?
The capability is one thing, but then the practice is what is important here. Because, because once you subject the body to that kind of a role, there is a possibility that when issues, when all matters or all relevant requirements are not submitted, a wrong decision can be made.
That's why I asked, do you not think that the commission and the commissioners are in a position to not make a decision based on the documents that are sent to them? They're able or not able to read the documents and assess whether or not the documents that have been sent to them are sufficient or not prior to deciding whether to make a decision or to request for further documents from the council?
That is what I'm telling you, their capability is one thing, but the requirement of the process is what we are complying with. Just like the case of the PMO vis-à-vis the PSC. If I am recommending for promotion as a permanent secretary, I send to the Public Service, I send to PMO for recommendation, they don't just submit it to the Service Commission, Public Service Commission. They request all relevant documents, they write back to me and request for all relevant documents that are related to that particular request. Once I fulfill that, then they will put it as an issue, send it to the secretary to the Service Commission to be discussed. So it's the same practice here, that when issues are brought to the permanent secretary, he will have to look at it, just like the permanent secretary PMO will look at issues at that level. And then once the compliance are made, they will be submitted for decision by the Service Commission. That's the process.
Okay. So you stand by the position that the delay in transmitting these documents to the Service Commission is not or does not relate to the ministry, but rather it is due to insufficiency of documentation that comes from the council?
I don't know which delay you are referring to.
The one in respect of the bundle of documents that you were reviewing?
Yes, I did not say it was as a result of, I said some of two major factors could be. Which of them played in this case, I'm not, I'm not preview to that as of now. But I said two factors, one of it is there might not be sufficient attachments which we might request. Or the second one will be as a result of the delay in transmission of the correspondence itself.
Okay. Sorry, can I get the file? Now, as permanent secretary, do you sit in on interviews for staff of council? Of the various councils?
Yes, at some, sometimes, yes.
Why is that?
When they are appointing high-profile members of the council, the permanent secretary sits there to guide the Service Commission as to the lay down rules and requirements for those appointments. Just like the permanent secretary PMO sits at the Public Service Commission.
Right, and who else is usually invited to these interview, interviews?
The, if it is the CEO to be appointed for a particular council, we will invite the chairperson or the mayor. If it is cadres below the CEO, the CEO that is chief executive officer will represent the council. Or if he's not available, he will send a representative.
Okay. Could you please first identify the file in question? The, the files, not the, the letter?
The file is Banjo City Council Staff Appointment.
And the file number?
File number, L, eighteen slash one ninety-five slash zero one.
And it, sorry, the name was what? Banjo City Council?
Banjo City Council Staff Appointment.
Very well. And this is one of the ministry's files, correct?
Exactly.
Chairperson, I apply to tender this file into evidence?
Yes, Madame Chair, step back. The Banjo City Council Staff Appointment file with reference number LM one eight stroke one nine five stroke zero one is hereby admitted in evidence and marked as LCG three.
As, the commission places. Mister Sunyan, who, what happens when the Local Government Service Commission does not carry out its functions under its mandate?
They can be dissolved.
And who makes that decision?
The minister. The appointing authority is the dissolution authority.
Okay, and has there been an instance where the commission has been dissolved due to this fact?
Not to my knowledge, the one that I know of, the ones that serve, their term expired and then new ones were appointed.
Okay, what, what are their terms?
Two years.
Two years?
Renewable year.
Very well. There is a bundle of documents that were shown to you just now?
Yes.
Can you identify the first one?
The first one is from Banjo City Council, a letter registration of the confirmation of a position of Director of Admin.
I'm sorry, and the reference number?
Reference number eighty-six stroke BCC stroke one O two stroke in bracket one, volume one.
Okay, and the second one in the bundle that was shown to you?
The second one is also appointment of the, appointment for the confirmation of Director of Admin.
And the reference as well as the folio?
Eighty-five stroke BCC stroke one zero two, stroke in bracket one, volume one.
And the third?
The third one is clarification over the confirmation of the appointment, my position of Director of Admin.
Is there a fourth?
No, that's the third one.
That's the third one? Okay. Now, I'm sorry, there, there's a document, I believe folio gosh, I can't see the folio right, fifty-something, I think maybe fifty-one?
Fifty-one.
It's folio fifty-one dated twenty-eighth February, sorry, twenty-eighth October, two thousand and nineteen?
Fifty-eight, yes.
It's fifty-eight, that's what's the date for the folio fifty-eight?
It's twelve March, twenty twenty.
No, no, that's fine, okay. Let, let's, let's deal with the first three documents that you identified. These are from the Banjo City Council, correct?
Exactly.
And they're addressed to your office?
Exactly.
And they're in respect of a particular position, the position of Director of Admin?
Yes.
And in it's, you've been informed in these letters that there is one Yusufajalo who's been acting in the position of Director of Admin since about twenty nineteen?
Exactly.
And they've written in twenty twenty as well and subsequent years and as I believe up to twenty twenty-three, they also wrote
Exactly.
About the same issue?
Exactly.
And so you are aware that from at least twenty nineteen, there is no substantive position for the Director of Admin at Banjo City Council?
Yusufah was acting in that position?
Yes, substantive.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
So there was no director, there was an acting director?
Exactly.
How long are acting positions supposed to last for?
Six months.
But here we have an acting position that's four years?
Exactly.
Do you think this is abnormal?
Certainly.
And do you know why nothing was done about it?
That's why in the letters you will see my correspondence for verification from the Service Commission. Because it's an independent body, I don't know what their reasons, so I did ask my Director of Governance to get in touch and verify why the, these appointments have not been confirmed.
And do you know whether letters were written to that effect, to the Service Commission?
Certainly, I believe, because I, we sent this to the secretary to the commission.
Would those letters be in that file?
It's supposed to be, because, no, no, it will be in their, maybe their internal file. The secretary will be able to tell us.
Who's internal file?
There, there is a file for the Service Commission at the level of the secretary. That is different from our mainstream filing.
But the files of the local government, sorry, the, the okay, so are you saying that the Local Government Service Commission has its own file at its?
Level, at the secretary, yes.
And where is the secretary house?
That's the Director of Governance, serve as the secretary.
Okay, so he would have access, he would have those files?
Yes, exactly.
Very well. But up to twenty twenty-three, January, at least from that, from those correspondence, councils are still sending letters directly to the permanent secretary rather than the, not even the Director of Governance, but to the permanent secretary Ministry of Lands?
I think we will go over this again and again, but my explanation...
I, I understand your explanation.
Yeah, yeah.
But what I'm asking is for you to confirm that as of January twenty twenty-three, this was the case?
That is the practice, that is the best practice.
And this is coming after PMO's advice that the Directorate of Governance be separate and it have its own letterhead and that the Local Government Service Commission has its own secretary and that it should work independently so that it is not a, from time to time business, considering that their job is to deal with the admin situation of all the local area councils?
Yes, I have an issue with the advice. Yes, I have an issue with the advice itself.
You have an issue with the advice?
Itself, itself.
Okay.
Because just like the, the office of that particular, the, the, the office where the letter emanated from, the Permanent Secretary has, the, all these directors are structured under me, under him. They are not independent, so advising a direct rate under the ministry to be independent, that is an ill advice. And also the Service Commission is independent, it has never been interfered by the ministry in their operation. So I, I, I believe, a minister being the head of the ministry and the Permanent Secretary and the Service Commission is the same setup as at the PMO, the PMO has direct rights under the, under the Permanent Secretary that deals with personnel matters, training, other issues. So they also, and also the secretary to the commission is a staff under the Permanent Secretary, PMO. So the same setup, that is what we replicated at the ministry, so if they critic that, I believe that is not the best practice.
So you're, essentially, the ministry will not be complying with that advice?
It's not a proper advice.
Very well. Did you write back to them, to inform them?
We had a meeting over it.
Okay, but there's no formal correspondence to that effect?
No, no, we, we had a meeting over the issue, yeah.
Okay. Do you know the procedure that is in place for when, as you call them, high-level staff of the councils need to go on leave?
Yes.
Can you tell us about that?
High-level, at what stage, policy level?
CEO?
Okay, CEO.
Yes.
Yeah, they apply through the Permanent Secretary for Minister's approval for their leave.
They apply to the Permanent Secretary?
Through the Permanent Secretary for Minister's approval.
For their leave, okay. And there was a point during which the ministry gave approval to councils to be able to recruit staff of certain pay grades, is that correct?
It's not the ministry.
Lower, it's not the ministry?
It's not the ministry, the Local Government Service Commission.
Okay, do you know anything about that?
Yes, the Service Commission, I think from grade, is it grade five downwards or grade three downwards? They are, the CEO, through the Establishment Committee, can appoint those cadres.
Okay, and do you know why this was done?
It's, I think the Service Commission was doing this in order to allow the CEO to recruit at that level, to enable them to do that low-grade recruitment, just like in the mainstream where Permanent Secretaries can appoint certain lower grades.
Okay, and so the, the CEO would write to the minister through the Permanent Secretary to apply, to apply for leave. Do you know what the considerations are for whether or not he or she can go on leave or how the applications are dealt with?
Yeah, the application, as everybody is entitled to a leave, you will apply in, in, every year you are entitled to your leave, you apply as an entitlement, I don't think, unless there is exigency of service, if not, you should be granted your leave.
So how, how would the ministry be in a position to know if there's exigencies of service that should affect a leave application?
Yeah, that will be in consultation with the, if it is a CEO with the council head, that is either the chairperson or maybe there are assignments by government that have been handed at that council level.
Okay. So, okay, let's go back to another issue. Does the ministry allocate land to the councils?
I don't understand.
Does the ministry allocate land to the councils, to any of the area councils?
When, when, when this requested.
Pardon?
When they request, yes.
When they request, only when they request?
Yes.
Okay, and what would be the basis for such a request?
That would be the need of the council.
It would be the what, sorry?
The need of the council.
Okay, and how are such allocations made?
The allocation goes through the process and it will, it will address to the Permanent Secretary requesting for such a land and the request will be sent subject to Minister's approval. And once that approval is met, the approval will be sent, conveyed to the Director of Lands who will prepare an allocation later and send it to convey the approval of the minister to the, the particular council.
So in such a case, would it be that the council would have identified an area that they wish to, a plot of land or something that they wish to be allocated to them? Or they would just identify the need and the ministry would decide where to give them?
In council's case, most of the time they have an area that, area specific, have a request. They have areas that they are interested in and they will request for it. But on the other hand, where they request, for, for example, a land for, a dump site, landfill for dump sites, those go through a process where it will be sent to the Department of Physical Planning for verification of, of scouting of ideal sites. And when these ideal sites are provided, depending on the use, it will be subjected to various other stakeholders. If it is a dump site, it will be subject to any, where the environmental assessment will be made. And once that is qualified, allocation will be made.
Okay, and are these allocations usually within the jurisdiction of that particular area council? Or are they able to have land that is outside of the jurisdiction?
They can have land outside their jurisdiction, it depends, because the, the land, it's estate land, especially some areas are state land, they are, they can apply to the state based on the deed, if there is a deed for it, they, they'll, it will be granted.
What, what kind of land would this be, other than dumping sites, which one can understand is as a need issue? But then considering that the area council's jurisdiction is determined by the locality and their, their functions really are to administer the areas within their jurisdiction and to better it, how does it work when, that the land that they request is outside of the jurisdiction of the locality?
They become a tenant of the other council, they will comply just like any other person.
Right, okay. So leases, that are, allocations that are essentially converted to leases, where are they filed?
Come again, allocation?
Allocations, the allocations, if, sorry, let me just rephrase that question. When the ministry makes an allocation to the council, the allocation usually has conditions, correct?
Exactly.
And upon the fulfillment of those conditions, the ministry may issue a lease in respect of the land that has been allocated?
Exactly.
So what happens when the lease is issued?
It goes to the council.
Who's the custodian of the leases?
The minister.
The ministry, and is there any other body that the leases are sent to?
During the process, you mean?
No, the actual lease document, is it registered?
When, when, yeah, that is, it goes to registry, it goes to Ministry of Justice for registration.
So the, all the leases essentially that have been issued by the ministry would be under the custody of the registrar of deeds, essentially?
Yeah, there will be a copy with them.
Okay. The Local Government Act gives the local authorities power to establish a local road authority, is that correct?
Yeah, there, there is, there are several bodies that the councils can set up. I believe the local road authority might be one of them, I'm not very sure, but I think it could be one of them.
Okay. The Act also sets out other areas which the local government authorities are supposed to administer within their locality?
Exactly.
Right. Now, the Act actually does provide for the local government authorities to set up or to establish a local roads authority to be responsible for the upkeep and maintenance of feeder roads within its locality?
Yes.
Right, and do you know whether this authority or any of the councils ever established such an authority?
I'm not aware of.
Would the ministry normally be informed or would the approval be required for this? To set up another municipal authority, like a local one?
If the Act provides for it, for them to set it, they will not need the Minister's approval.
Okay. The Act also provides for the ministry responsible for the National Roads Authority, which I'm assuming is the Ministry of Transport, to ensure that that provision comes into force. But you have said that you do not, you're not really aware that any such authority exists, right?
Exactly.
Is there a financial advisory committee?
The AdHoc Financial Advisory Committee.
Pardon?
The AdHoc one, you mean?
I don't know, that's why I'm asking, do you have, is there one?
Yes, there is a Financial Advisory Committee, AdHoc one, that deals with subventions and also budget review. I don't know whether that's what you're referring to.
Yes, that's why I'm asking, I'm, I'm not aware.
Okay, yeah, that, that one exists.
Okay, so what, what's, what's its function?
The function is when government pays subvention to councils. Got these subventions are required to come in a project form. Then they will look at, the body will sit and look at these projects, look at their viability and intervention area and then also disposals forms, recommend for disposment of forms and also help in the implementation by monitoring those projects.
Okay.
Equally, they sit to review the council budgets and pick up points that they feel should be adjusted in the, in the budget. And then this, the minister will be advised, where the minister can write to the council for those to be adjusted so that he can endorse the, the budget.
So does the ministry actually write to the councils for, to adjust their budget or is this?
Normally, normally the, the, the process that we do, we have the councils and then we will observe the adjustments. The councils will do this adjustment and resubmit for Minister's endorsement. They will agree at the meeting to go and adjust and then that will be done and then the minister will endorse the budget.
Okay, so who, who are the members of this AdHoc Finance Committee?
The AdHoc Finance Committee, the Permanent Secretary sits there of the ministry.
The Permanent Secretary what?
The Permanent Secretary of the Ministry, that is the Ministry of Lands. And the chairperson or a mayor sits there, a member from the Ministry of Finance, a member from the GRA, and if I could remember, the Directorate of Governance also sits there. I think those are the members, if I can rightly remember.
And how often do they sit?
The, the, the meeting just implies the name, it AdHoc, it depends on the situation. When there are disposements, we will sit and when there are budget concessions, we'll sit.
Okay. When was this one set up?
This is a provision of the Act, so when there is a need, we will bring the body together and deal with the issue.
So are you saying that it's been in effect since the Act was, since the legislation was enacted?
I would not say the time I was not there as a Permanent Secretary, but the time I was there as a Permanent Secretary was functional.
Okay. Do you have any knowledge about the procurement activities of any of the councils?
Yeah, normally when the, the inspection teams go, they will look at their procurement issues. And sometimes they will flag certain issues in terms of procurement.
So what about the contract committees of the various councils, do you have any idea about those?
Yeah, they normally have contract committees.
Does the ministry nominate any members to their contracts committees?
Not that I'm aware of, the ministry never, unless they need personnel, but I've never remembered any time that I'm consulted for ministry to nominate somebody to any of those bodies.
Okay. The Local Government Finance and Audit Act provides that the ministry should appoint two members of the public, well, the ministry nominates two members of the public onto the contracts committee of each of the councils. But you're not aware that this has happened during your tenure, at least?
Yes, we have never put any body in those councils, in those bodies.
Now, the, each council is supposed to have an internal audit department, right?
Exactly.
And on top of that, the National Audit Office also audits all the councils?
Exactly.
Now, the issue of procurement, has it arisen a lot in any of these audits?
Exactly, it has.
It has?
Yes.
And has the ministry been in a position to do anything about this?
Most of the audit queries are responsibility of the, the management of the council. However, if this issue persists and it escalates, the ministry can intervene in resolving the problem.
How does the ministry intervene to resolve the problem?
That depending on the nature of the problem, we will call the parties concerned and then try to understand what are the issues involved and then we will then give advice as to how to solve it. Otherwise, we will, if there are disciplinary issues there, we will send it to the Service Commission for disciplinary action.
Okay, and the Local Government Finance and Audit Act provides for financial manuals for the local government councils? Is there a financial manual for the local government councils?
Financial manual, I'm not, I'm not sure, but I can verify that for you, I've not saw.
Okay, can, can you do that? And if there is one, can you provide it to the commission?
Right.
But it is provided that the minister is responsible for ensuring that such a manual exists to guide the councils in their financial dealings?
Yes.
Do you, or does the ministry rather, receive applications for approval from the chairpersons or councillors for travel outside of the jurisdiction?
Yes.
How are these applications, how are they made?
The chairperson, it, it quacks on, will write through the Permanent Secretaries seeking for. The chairperson, it, it quacks on, will write through the Permanent Secretaries seeking for approval for travel clearance. And this is, will be either granted or denied, depending on the circumstance.
Does this relate to all travels or particular types?
Travels that are work-related.
Work-related. And the chairperson or, well, the person making the application is required to supply supporting document?
Yes.
And what is the process for considering and making a decision on such an application?
Yeah, two issues. One is, is the travel relevant to the council? And two, whether that travel is at the cost of the council. These are major factors that determines whether the travel, particular travel clearance is approved or not.
What do you mean by if it is to, if it is a cost to the council? Who, who else would, who else would it be a cost to?
Yeah, there are travels that are sponsored by the organizers of seminars and the like. And by, yeah, by, by, by their stakeholders, they will sponsor certain programs. But we remember that councils have a budget line for travels. So once this budget line is exhausted, you still want to travel. That's why the minister is given that oversight function to make sure that there is prudent use of the fund.
But would the council not be in a position to approve a supplementary project?
They can.
They can, would they still need approval from the minister?
For the
For supplementary?
For the supplementary budget, they have to go through the council process. That means if, if, if you are asking for supplementary budget, you must indicate where the fund is coming from. The extra money is coming from, but you can also do via-ment. That's another efficient way of moving funds. But it's not, it's not advisable to always via development funds into travel routes. That's why it is frowned on.
Okay, can you just kindly explain to the commission the concept of via-ment?
Via-ment process is where you have a budget line. Two or three or more budget lines being moved to another budget line where the previous budget line, where the fund is being moved from, you don't deem it a necessary activity. And then you are moving it to another budget line where you have exhausted or you don't have enough fund to particularly execute the, the, the activity you want to do.
Okay. So is what you're saying, back to what you were saying, that the two issues when considering such applications? Is it that if the travel is funded by a development partner, the council does not require clearance from the ministry?
It does. It's the, that, that is just part of the consideration to either approve or not. But a request for approval is, before the court ruling, is always the case.
So what is the difference when considering a situation where the, the travel is funded by a donor partner and where it's funded by the council? Is there any difference?
Yeah, significant difference. Where the council exhausts their budget and they still want to travel, you will not approve that. But if that travel is sponsored by somebody outside, you will approve it because it's not a cost to council.
The ministry is in charge, in essence, of the emoluments of the chairpersons and mayors of the council, is that not correct?
Exactly.
Is, are the emoluments, are they reviewed periodically?
Certainly.
Can you tell us how often and the process for this?
Yes, the process is based on the need. The, we have to understand that the budget, the revenue base of these various councils are different. And this to an extent plays a role in the preparation of or determining some of these emoluments. But then the councillors in twenty, in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty, I'm not sure. We had, we had to use collaborative work with them to come up with a standard allowance for councillors. Because they were complaining that their allowances were not enough. And then there were obvious reasons that there needed to be a standardization of councillors at that level. And that was done, reviewed, and then sent to the minister. And then that was approved, and they, they started working on it. And the chairpersons as well, they asked various councils, sent in a request for the review of their pay, and then this was also granted. So those are the ones, those that are come through the ministry.
Okay, but how often is the one for the chairperson reviewed, do you know?
That's, just like I said, it's not dependent, the period. The last one done, I think it was twenty twenty or twenty nineteen, I'm not, I'm not very sure. But then it was done either twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, or maybe twenty twenty-one. That was the time the chairpersons' old sources. Because we realize that now, we have a mayor who is heading a council. We have a councillor in Jajapure. We have a councillor in Basse. We have a councillor in Baidu. We have a councillor in Brekama. How do we, they are all doing the same rule. How do we now? If we have a Grade One driver in Baidu, a National Assembly member in Basse, they pay the same amount. Now we want to rationalize. You come down to the chairpersons and mayors. These are all considered chairpersons as far as the Act is concerned. But now, before my committee into the office, we realize that the mayor of Baidu and the KF were paid way, way above the chairpersons of Brekama and the regions. Way above, sometimes maybe double or triple their salaries. So where, how we get to this has got some correspondence or approvals, some files indicating. But naturally, with justice, all chairpersons should be equally paid. But then, you are not, you don't have a centralized vote to pay these chairpersons. You are going to pay it from the revenue within that council. We cannot use Baidu's revenue to pay a chairperson in Jajapure. So that is a constraint, that is a problem. A council like Kutawu, which is not having much of a revenue base, if you want them to pay their chairperson at the rate of the mayor of Baidu, they might not be able to fulfill or sustain those payments going by. So that's why that particular issue has been relaxed to proper study it and then come up with a position on that.
So when the Local Government Finance and Audit Act was enacted, it provided for emoluments and allowances of chairpersons of councils. And the mayor of Kanifing Municipality was paid higher than the mayor of Baidu City Council, who was also paid higher than the other chairpersons. So do you think that this is due to the fact that Baidu City Council and Kanifing Municipal Council are perhaps bigger councils and so there's more or there's different obligations and so the pay should be higher?
Of course, Baidu is not big. Brekama is bigger than Baidu.
In terms of finances as well?
Revenue base, yeah, that's what I said earlier. I said this is informed by their revenue base. Because we don't have a centralized revenue where we are paying them, where we can equate them and be sure that the fund is there. This, they are paying it from their own revenue. So if their revenue cannot sustain it, we, we don't advise they, they start it.
Okay. The revised emoluments and allowances, are they gazetted?
They desire.
The revised emoluments and allowances for the chairpersons and the mayors, are they gazetted?
I think, I think when it was done, the process was completed, but I'll confirm that.
Yes, please, please confirm and let us know as well. My co-council will ask you a few questions now.
Right.
Hello? Yeah, very well. I'm Oyu Pierce, I will ask you a few questions and perhaps most of those were being discussed with my lead council. In the areas of the finance, the autonomy, the financial autonomy of the area councils. Questions perhaps as well in relation to the Local Government Service Commission. Yes, so I will start first with the financial autonomy of council. What are the obligations of government through your ministry in relation to the finances of the local government area councils?
You mean their financial autonomy?
Yes.
Their financial autonomy is the, is, it is pointing at their jurisdiction.
Right.
That means that any area council must spend the money or revenue generated from that council, within that council. Unless there is a disaster where you can donate, you are not supposed to use Baidu City Council fund to do any work at KMC. So that's the financial autonomy that they are talking about.
Very well, now, does government have any obligation in relation to meeting up with the financial demands of these local area councils?
Local councils generate their revenue by collecting tax, licenses and the like. However, the Act provides for government to provide twenty-five percent of their development budget to the councils for development projects. But this is not going into the main budget, it will be provided and then it will go to intervene in projects. This has not been met by government as far as twenty-five percent is concerned. But government has been given a total from eighteen twenty eighteen to date.
Now, why do you think that government could have, or is not meeting up with the obligations in relation to twenty-five percent of the development budget?
There are various reasons, one of which I think when we engage the finance minister, he indicated that an institution that cannot produce a financial statement is not stable. And as such, he will not put in the money. He urged councils to work towards cleaning their finances and make sure their financial, financial dealings are transparent. And when that is done, he will oblige, he will, he will endeavor to make sure they receive this money. He made this announcement at the National Assembly.
Are you saying that the, that the Minister of Finance has a discretion in relation personally to the Act to decide as to whether to meet up with the government's obligation?
Exactly.
Are you saying they have a discretion on that?
It's the chief accountant to the government. Wherever they are spending money, they must make sure there is transparency. There are principles in accounting, in financial spending. Where you know there is a problem, you don't spend the money there because at the end of the day, you will be blamed.
I'm saying whether the Act provides for situations wherein the minister will have a discretion to that.
It's just a best practice.
You will agree with me that it is clearly not the position in relation to the Act that if the minister perhaps has any queries, maybe perhaps there are other channels of ways of trying to channel these complaints, but not to restrict the, the area councils in relation to receiving this, this benefit. What, what do you say to that?
I would say the minister, the minister is a minister of finance, he has his opinion. And the reason why he said that, maybe he will be depositing to answer that. But I can tell you that even myself in my, if I'm giving remitting fund to anybody and that body has questions of financial transparency, I will not put my money there.
Are there, do you know of any examples of area councils that have issues of transparency in relation to their, their financial statements?
They cannot produce a financial statement, that is the first problem.
Can you give an example?
All of them.
Is that in relation to, like, since when? The past five years, four years?
More than five years.
So you are saying that none of the local government area councils were producing financial statements?
As far as I know.
Very well. Now, we move to the Local Government Service Commission. You have highlighted that complaints or correspondences usually will come from, you have directed that they must be channeled through your office as the peers to the, to the commission, is that correct?
Exactly.
And that was not the case prior to your, to your, to your, to your letter directing them to do so?
No, prior to my letter, when they send it to the Service Commission, they will, they will bring it back to us, for me, to vet. So it was going forward and backward. When they send it to the Service Commission, the secretary will bring it back to the Permanent Secretary. So we just have to write to them to put them in line with the process. That is all, because the Commission Secretary, when they receive the letters, they will bring it to the Permanent Secretary. So now we just tell them that this is the process that you need to follow. Because if not, when you send it, it comes back. So instead of coming and going back, it's better to follow the due process.
Do you have an instance wherein a correspondence was sent by the commission which was addressed to them back to the, back to your office?
Yeah.
Can you provide a sample of that correspondence from the, from the commission to your office?
You mean the, the letter that was brought to our, no problem. But this is not in the form of letter, they will give it to there because we are in the same office. We have to look at the proximity and the functionality of the office. The Direct Rate of Governance with the Secretary is working with, under the Permanent Secretary. When these things are brought, the, the chairperson at the time will indicate that they should send it to the Permanent Secretary for the vetting. Then he will just bring them for, for, to the Permanent Secretary, because we are in the same office. It's not like we have a letter that is being sent or so. It's the request that will be brought to the Permanent Secretary for him to look at and then vet. So we see the occurrence of that, forward and backward. So eventually, we had to write to them to tell them how the process should go.
So you are saying usually there are no cover letters in relation to trying, addressing these letters back to your office as the peers?
When they go to the, the Service Commission?
Yes.
No.
And, and so generally, we can't act on, on those because we don't have evidence of writings in relation to the Local Government Service Commission referring letters back to your office.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. They, they instruct the, the secretary to take the letter to our office. There is no like formal correspondence, yeah.
Yes, now, when you instructed the, that all letters or complaints that are supposed to be addressed to the commission to pass through your office, you said that is the best practice?
Letters of complaints?
Complaints or letters addressed to the commission?
Yes.
To be, to be, to first pass through your office, that is the direction, right?
Yes.
Now, you said that you were acting on best practice?
Yes.
Were, were those, were you supported by, by directions given to you by, by the Act? Does the Act say so?
Yes.
Where?
The Local Government Act indicate that the Local Government, Local Government Service Commission should operate in, at the same operational level with the Public Service Commission. And that's the best practice at the Public Service Commission. service commission and that is the best practice at the public service commission. That's what we are adopting.
No, in fact, it says, it says the contrary, it says that they are, they can be directed as directed by the, the, the public service commission. It, it does not say what you're saying right now.
No, 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 maybe you are quoting a different section of the Act.
Can you please help us?
Can you look at the functions of the service commission?
Yes, I have looked at that and then my, my position is, which you can always refer with, is that the functions of the service commission doesn't say they should operate the same level technically, of course, we expect that, but my position is the fundamental issue is that here is that they are supposed to be...
What does the Act say?
They are supposed to be independent, is that not correct?
No, 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 let's go back to your point. What does the Act say, as you could, in contrast to my own? What does the Act say?
I'm asking you that question now. My question now is, since you are saying that it should be a parallel, can you refer us to where it says it's a parallel?
That is in the Act.
And whilst you are checking that, you will agree with us that the, the commission should be independent in the exercise of its functions, is that not correct?
Can I read the section for you?
Yes.
It's section one-one-eight, subsection four.
Yes.
In the performance of the functions of the local government service commission shall conform to the standard established by the public service commission.
Yes, but that does not make it, that does not remove the independent nature of the commission?
Counsel, we are talking of two things here. You object to my position and you brought in a position which is in itself wrong. Yes, counsel, listen, you object to my, we are on air, you object to my position, but the position you brought was in fact the one that was wrong, because I brought in the position I made and it's in the Act. Now, the independent nature of the service commission, we were talking about best practice here, you were asking about the best practice.
May I refer you to one-one-eight, subsection three, paragraph D, where it states that OE performs such other functions as may be assigned to it by the, by the council or public service commission. That is where I said that, of course, that is the case, but it does not remove the independence of the commission. Do you agree with that?
I think we need to clarify the point we are in, instead of going to the independent nature of the council. You did ask me whether the local government service commission has, I, I call that their work is a best practice. Your concern is that best practice?
Yes.
And that best practice, you asked me whether I have a provision to support that. I told you the provision that support that and you object.
Yes.
You brought a different provision and you said my provision doesn't exist. That was what I brought. Concerning their independent nature, that is clear in the Act, that in their operation, they are independent, I agree with that, but that has nothing to do with this provision.
Now, um, you know, it all boils down to the independent nature of it. Now, let's move on to as to the reason why you are requesting that letters meant for the commission will pass through your office. Will that not affect the independent nature of the commission?
No.
And why do you say that?
Because of the provision that I just read to you.
This, this provision does not direct that letters must, must pass through your office?
It says they shall, they shall do their function to the standard and the best practice standard at public service commission is the letters going through the permanent secretary?
Yes, well, is it not the case that if the service commission is independent with its own secretariat and run its affairs independently, will that not in fact provide a more efficient execution of their mandate?
And that is the case?
Yes, no, that is not the case here.
That is the case.
The, the, the case here is the, your office perhaps more or less serves as a secretary or whatever to the commission, because all, all correspondence are received by your office. That is the direction that you have issued.
Yeah, I think we need to clarify one thing here. The public service commission and its secretary, if it's detached, is not the same as the office of the permanent secretary. Let me refer you back to the practice obtained at the, the public service commission. The public service commission has a secretary led by the secretary to the public service commission and he has his staff working under him, just like the director of governance is serving as the secretary with his staff under him. Then you have the office of the PMO as the public personnel management unit, led by the permanent secretary. Equally, you have the office of the permanent secretary Ministry of Lands doing the same function. So you have three structures in each of these cases. You have the public service commission and the local government service commission. You have the secretary to the public service commission, which is separate, and we have the directive of governance, which is separate, and we have the permanent secretary, PMO and the permanent secretary, local government. What is not equal here?
No, um, if you are receiving complaints that are supposed to be addressed to the commission and they are supposed to have their own secretariat, will the secretary not be in a position effective enough and competent enough to receive these correspondences? That is the question.
I'm telling you, maybe you are not understanding me.
Now, if, let's assume that practice is being adopted, will that not be a good practice?
No.
Why?
Because the secretary would not be able to, they are not the custodian of this Act.
Very well, let's move on now. Do you receive complaints as the peers or your office from, from the local government, from either staffs or the, the council itself?
Complaints such as?
Complaints or, of, of any nature fraud, it could be fraud complaints or mismanagement of any kind?
You know, we have two roles that we play for the, to the, to the councils. Councils complain come to me for redress myself as a permanent secretary. They bring their issues that are administrative in nature and I am supposed to sit over them and help and address those issues. Those doesn't go, they are not like disciplinary actions, they are not issues like appointments, they come to me and I deliberate on them with the councils and we resolve them. But then there are other complaints that come and that are meant for the service commission, but they pass through me to check of their compliance and once they are complied, then they will be sent to the service commission, they will sit over it and make decision.
What was then compliance of what? What regulation or rule?
Compliance in the sense that I made an example here earlier, that we have received a complaint that they want to dismiss a staff.
Can you make reference to the, to the specific case?
Yeah, this, this, this is a staff working with a, a, a brick area council, was sent for dismissal, recommended for dismissal. But when we look at the submission, we requested, the office requested for the council to provide us whether this man was served, warning before.
You see, honorable peers, let me recite it short, and this is the very function of the commission, that is my point. My point is issues of dismissal, issues of appointment, are these not functions of the commission?
What I'm talking about, if you got me so, you will not get the sense.
No, will you agree that it is a function of the commission?
No, I will not agree. The context you are putting it, you have to listen and understand the context, if not, you miss the point. The point here is we are just doing, we are just a conduit, doing transmitting, receiving and transmitting to the councils, to, to the service commission, between the council and the service commission. And in the process, we look at what is being transmitted. If it is not having issue, we'll tell you, we don't say your operation, your request is wrong, we said you need to put in A, B, C, because these people just sit over the issue, considering all steps have been followed, then they will decide whether to go in for it or not. If they said they have not served the relevant warnings and the like, we'll tell them that the law says you should serve deposit, not this, sorry, warnings before you dismiss.
Now, honorable peers, I understand your position, don't get me wrong, I am just disagreeing with your position and then I will entertain, of course, your explanation, definitely, and the commissioners will decide as to what they believe is the right thing to do. But now, you said earlier that you have been instructed by the commission to make sure that whenever complaints are sent to them, they always refer it to your office, is that not correct?
You said, come again, you said, I said, I was instructed?
Whenever complaints are being sent to the commission or communications to the commission, they always refer it back to your office, is that not correct that you said that?
No, you said, I said, I was instructed?
No, you are instructed, of course, you said, you explained here.
Yes.
That when I asked you the question as to you, why you issued that instructions to the councils that they must send communications through you, you explained, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the commissioners will, because you are in the same office, they will always send back the file to your office, is that not correct?
No, maybe you have a position here. What I said, you still keep on the position, what I've said is, there were instances...
Yes.
Where issues were sent before, you asked whether before, that was the practice, that was what brought about it?
Yes.
Right, I said before, there were instances where these issues were sent to the councils and they asked them that they have to go through the permanent secretary for us to do the cleaning for them, because they have to sit and decide over the issue. They are not supposed to go to the councils and find this information, they just sit over the issue, they are a decision-making body, they are not operational body. So they have to have an operational arm who should do the admit and the operational matters for them. So that's, that's the function, or that's the only function of the ministry.
Now, when you issued that, that directive to the area councils that communications to the commission should be channeled to your office?
Yeah.
On what authority were you acting on?
That was, I told you, that we, we, we are going by the best practice and the provision of the Act.
Yes, well, the provision of the Act doesn't provide that, so we will go by your, by your position that it is perhaps the best practice in your own opinion?
The provision of the Act says the best practice is they should conform with the standard of the public service commission.
Yes, very well, so let's now move, we were addressing the issues of complaints. Now, when you receive complaints, how do you deal with them?
When we receive?
Complaints from the councils?
When we receive issues from the councils?
Yes, issues, yes.
Requests or issues?
Yes.
Yeah, once they are complied with, we look into the files, you will see it submitted to the local government service commission secretary for onward transmission to the, for the commission for their decision, for their consideration.
Very well.
Yes.
So in the instance wherein an area council decides to suspend or discipline a particular staff or someone who works for the council and you feel that procedure is wrong, how do you address this issue?
If it is wrong, it's wrong.
But how do you address them?
We address it by telling them it's wrong.
How do you tell them it's wrong?
We write to them.
Do you have any evidence, any instance wherein you have cause to write to any area council in relation to them adopting a particular procedure which was wrong in that instance?
Yes, I know it's pointing at Senator Martin Sonko, but I am telling you that the minister wrote to the mayor, telling her, telling him that your position in, in acting, you acted outside your powers, I think the letter is in the, in the file.
So...
So that was done?
Yes, you were saying the issue of Senator Martins, can you shed more light as to what was the issue in relation to Senator Martins?
In relation to Senator Martin?
Yes.
If you go to the Act, the powers of council?
No, before the powers of council?
I want to come, I want to build up and then make you understand.
Very well.
Yeah, right. There is, you made mention that when the council, where the council decide to discipline and when the disciplinary function is the role of whom? The service commission. The Act provides that powers of the council, it says council in exercising their powers cannot pass any power on another bodies that is established by that, by that, by this Act, the function of that body. So the council in itself passing resolution on disciplinary matter is illegal. That is, that is, that is clear.
Very well.
Very well, in the Act. So that, that action itself is illegal. So you pointed to them that the Act says that you are a body, another body is set up by this Act and give it functions and the Act tells you that in exercising of your powers on your, on your mandate, you cannot decide on another body that is established by this Act, their function, and it tells the council that unless you seek their permission or approval, if, if I use the right word. So if a council is cautioned that the action, course of action you have taken is not, is not your authority, you should rescind it and then put in a special request for us to send it to the service commission for decision. That is what we can do.
Yes, now, in the case of Senator Martins, what was the issue?
That was the issue.
What, what was the nature of, was there any complaint to you, to your office?
Complaint, yeah, there was complaint and counter complaint.
Yeah, so please give us a background of this.
All right, okay. The whole issue started when was a complaint of a fraud reported by the Lord Mayor, but this fraud was not on council fund, this fraud was on the council staff association, this is a private body. They said the private body, the council staff association, we are the CEO, I myself as the head, entered into a loan facility to buy land for the staff and this particular loan facility, I think the CEO used the council to guarantee the loan facility. And then now they, they said the amount that was paid, that was claimed to be the cost of the land and actual cost of the land are different, so as such, they are considering it to be a fraud. But this is a fraud against a staff association, a body, separate body from the council. The mayor wrote to indicate that that was a fraud. As an administrative body, we look into the matter and then we also, that time, when they wrote that, they also put a council resolution to suspend indefinitely the CEO, which was illegal. Of course, the minister wrote to them to indicate that the action was illegal, but in the meantime, can you please rescind the action and then send a request to this office for onward transmission of the correspondence to the service commission? And in fact, we said you could recommend administrative leave, but we have seen government putting senior officers on administrative leave. Then the service commission would have been specifically requested to consider putting that staff on administrative leave, but this was not done. And then now the CEO and the team also counter claim that there were some frauds made by certain elements of the council. So now we receive two positions. You, they said the CEO was having a fraud, the CEO also wrote with the team that there are practices that have been done at the council which are fraudulent. Now we need to investigate this. We asked the council to rescind their decision and then take this, they didn't, that is administrative mean and we could not do. In the meantime, these staff, they were, they were sitting at home, they were being paid by council, which is not fair to the council. It has to either be decided that they are either dismissed or they, they go back to work and the competent body should do that. So we, as, as, as the ministry, set up an inspection team, as required by law, to go and look at the matter. The inspection team went there, they brought issues. In fact, these issues now, they, they come up with more issues. Then the ministry decided to work on having a commission, a ministerial commission, to look at the issue as the competent independent body, to look at the issue and then come up with a recommendation and then we will all go by. And this commission issue was taken to court.
Now, before you proceed, prior to the setting up of this, of this commission, where was Senator Martins?
Senator was at home.
Home, very well, you may proceed.
Okay. Then the ministerial commission was taken to court and the court ruling indicated that the commission can go, but there are certain functions of the commissions where objected to. So as such, it cripples the commission, it could not proceed. And then that in fact what led us to be here today, that what led to, with other issues, we have the issue coming from BCC, we have issues coming from Basse, and we also had this issue at Janja Mure, then a request was made for the president to set up a commission, which is this commission.
Now, now, the dependency of the, of the case of Senator Martins? during dependency of the, of the case of Senator Martins, um, was there anyone acting? Do you, are you aware of there was anyone acting as a CEO at the time?
Again, that acting should be approved by the Service Commission.
No, were you aware that there was someone?
No, officially, no, no.
So, um, do, do you know whether Senator Martins at any time, um, um, was reinstated?
Senator Martins, yes, at some point.
How was she re-, how was she reinstated?
By the court.
Can you explain? What do you mean by the court?
The matter, KMC took the matter to court to indicate that Senator Martins, um, should be, um, sent, they should, they should be, they should be allowed to send her, if I get it right. And then the court ruled that they cannot grant KMC that because Senator Martins
I didn't get that point back. You said the court said they should be allowed to do what can be declared.
Their request was to, um, for court to not to allow Senator Martins and the seven, as in the seven or five accused back at the, at this place. But the court ruling, to summarize, um, I cannot get it correctly, court it correctly. But the court, um, ruling was that they cannot grant that, what the, what the KMC requested, because these people are public officers and they, they cannot stop them from going to their offices.
Yes, that is in relation to the injunction. Is that not correct? The injunction that, um, they cannot stop the, the, the government of, um, enforcing certain actions?
No, this is in relation to Senator Martins' case.
Yes, that's, that's what I'm saying. In that case, that the ruling would have been in, in relation to the injunction passed by the court. But the court, the, to your best, um, um, uh, knowledge, they didn't make any specific order that Senator Martins should be reinstated?
I think, uh, I'm subject to interpretation. But then to me, if anybody tell me that you cannot, somebody who is at the office, you stop him from going to the office, the court says you cannot stop him, he should go back to the office.
Very well. Does the, does your office have any, um, a- any powers or so to refer, um, any form of complaints you think, uh, you deem fit to the Commission, to the Local Government Service Commission?
Definitely.
Have you ever done that before in the past?
So, we, we've referred this particular case to the Local Government Service Commission and they said, they wrote to the Council that Senator Martins should go back to the office.
Do you have that letter?
The letter of the Commission?
Yes.
Yeah, it should be, it should be in the, in the office.
If you ask to provide the letter, will you be able to, um, be in a position to provide the letter?
Yeah, that one is in the office. There is a letter to that effect.
Now, perhaps, um, lastly, um, you, you have highlighted in your, in your, in your statement that, um, on page two, and if I may read, um, that some of the issues that causes misunderstanding and administration challenges between the local government authorities and the Ministry as a supervisory body are indicated below and you went on to indicate some of the challenges. Can you now, um, tell us more about the challenges you as a Ministry face in relation to the exercise of your functions with respect to the local government area councils?
Yeah, some of those functions, I said, um, in exercise and understanding of the local and financial autonomy of the local government authorities.
Yes.
Right, the financial autonomy and the local autonomy, this is misconstrued by a lot of people in, in, in my experience as an administrator. Uh, the, the Constitution did provide for, um, a local autonomy. But this is, the autonomy is limited, it's talking about their locality. They have an autonomy in their locality. That's why it is referred, the name refers to the local autonomy. If the KMC is referred, is, is working, they have a local autonomy within KMC. While likewise, by noon, uh, the mayor of KMC cannot have an authority over, um, the Council BCC. Equally, the, 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 the mayor of BCC cannot have an authority. So, um, this, most people misconstrue that the Councils have auto-, their autonomy. In general, they generalize the issue in my, um, interaction on my operations. This caused some difficulties in making people understand the limitation of the autonomy. And also we have seen instances where, um, council, councils try to do certain actions in another council's area.
I'm not sure whether I understand very well in relation to your first point with respect to the financial autonomy. I, I see your logic in relation to, of course, you can't, you cannot spend someone else's budget or someone else's finance in a, in another area council. I, I get that. But is this talking more, um, with, with respect to how they actually spend the finances of their area councils itself?
That's where I'm coming. I ex-, I just explained, okay.
Sorry, 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 Mr. PS. Um, sorry to intervene, Council, and, um, sorry for cutting you short in your response. Um, however, I'm just been told by the Secretariat that it is time for us to have a break for lunch, because it's already one-thirty. And, um, I believe that, um, uh, Councils may not be ready to conclude now. Um, and I think, um, this should be an appropriate place to stop for us to, uh, break for lunch and then reconvene at, uh, two-thirty, you know, to, to proceed on where Council, um, have stopped her questioning. Um, Council, if you have any other issue you can raise before we rise?
Um, I think, um, this would be a very convenient place to stop because, um, he is taking us through some of the points that he has highlighted as a challenge that they face in the, um, as, um, an institution in relation to their, their functions with respect to the local government. So we can stop that here.
Oh, um.
Thank you.
Yes, um, at this point, we would, um, 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 take a, um, a short, um, um, adjournment and break for lunch and then we will convene at, um, two-thirty. And, um, I, I, I wish you bon appetit for your lunch and, um, thank you for your patience.